Okay, thank you for joining me for another episode of Hands to Present Podcast. I'm your host Alan McGrady. I have a very, very special guest with me this week. Ms. Maria Cabrera. But I have to, does she say your name right? Cabrera? How do you say your last name?
Cabrera, like the Porsche Carrera. Just take out the R and put in a B. Red, hot, fast, same thing.
Nice, nice. Maria Cabrera, like the Porsche. I have to give her accolades right now because I feel, and me and you talk Maria, and I talked about how you don't get this proper credit. So I want to make sure before I get started, I want to give you credit. And I want to give you a proper introduction that you truly deserve for being such an amazing woman and actual person. I want to talk about the president, she's the winner of the President Bill Clinton Appreciation Recognition Letter. YMCA Delaware Woman of the Next Century. National Association of Women's Business Owners of the Bridge Builder of the Year. Multicultural Affairs and Council Philadelphia Delaware Valley Most Influential, most influential woman, excuse me, Latino leader two times. Delaware Today Magazine Latinos to Watch and much more. Also, you are also the, let me get this right, really one of the founders and board members of the Wilmington Urban League as well?
Yes, yes.
Also, you also received the Key of the City for Wilmington Delaware. And also, one last thing, one last thing, because this is one of the most important things I mentioned was, the first Latino woman to ever be part of the city council. And the only, in 2016, I believe you ran for mayor of Wilmington, was the only woman on that ticket, on that ballot, was the only woman. Maria Cabrera, we talk about her current vice president, Kamala Harris, and how she broke so many barriers, broke the glass ceiling, become the first Asian African American Vice President. But we don't give credit to people like you who are the first Latino woman to be a city council person. I want to give you your flowers while you're here and tell you thank you for the barriers that you broke. As a father who has a daughter coming to his world soon, it's women like you that give me hope and give my daughter hope of what things she can do and our children can overcome and what they can achieve. I want to thank you for your years and years of service, the greatness, the great things you have done. Like I said, I don't feel like you get your true due and appreciation you deserve. You're an incredible person. You gave me great advice when me and you met. You gave me some very good advice, some good business advice, we're not going to get into it today, but you told me some very good business advice as well. Thank you for everything you have done and all the things you're working towards. And we're going to get into all the great things that you currently have going on and you're working towards getting done. But I'm sorry, before we start this episode, I must have to speak on all the great things, accolades, and the great, how you broke the glass ceiling. So thank you for everything you have done, Maria Cabrera.
Well, thank you for pointing those things out. Obviously, when you choose public service, you don't do it for recognition. For me personally, whatever I do and what I give to my community and my contributions are because I believe in what I'm doing. I believe in helping others. I get it honestly from my mother, a woman who helped anybody in need. As I was growing up in Westchester, I mean, she would take people to get groceries if they needed groceries. If they needed to apply for social services and help with rent. If they needed presents at Christmas time for the children, she took them right to the Salvation Army and said, "You need to sign this family up." "Oh, we don't have any space." "No, you need to sign them up." And she was so politically active, more so than I really realized, in the sense that even without speaking English well, she managed to work with the leaders of the prominent party at that time, which were the Republicans in Westchester, and register so many people, especially all the people that were migrating from Puerto Rico to Chester County, and get them registered to vote. So she really pushed to get people involved in the process, which goes back to what you were saying in terms of breaking ceilings. And too often in our minority communities, people don't become engaged. One of the things that has happened with the Puerto Rican community, because I've met people out in my travels, who they're so political, and Puerto Rico, they are so political, they're very active. In fact, there are signs in public places where you're not allowed to discuss politics, because it's so heated. But they come here and they're not engaged in the process. And a lot of times, it's because nobody is reaching out to them or asking them to be involved. So I met a gentleman right at Adams Or during an event. We were giving out food, you know, serving food to the folks in the neighborhood. And I asked him if he was registered to vote. And this is when I was running. He says, "No." And I said, "Why?" He says, "Oh, I'm very politically active in Puerto Rico, but since I moved here 30 years ago, I haven't voted. I haven't been part of the process." And I was just, you know, really floored that here was someone who was so political back in his own, but he just never got involved here. So I believe that we need to do a better job for that community engagement. And especially now with Latinos, I'm very proud of the African American community and their involvement. And that, yes, that we have Kamala Harris in the White House. Thank you, Joe Biden, President Biden, for choosing such a qualified and able woman, who really now our little girls can turn around, my daughters and others can say, "Yes, we can. Yes, we can do this." And I want my Latina sisters and brothers and sisters to know that they too should be just as involved in politics here as they are back in their prospective homes. And I don't do things for the record recognition, but as far as the history of it is, because it is history making is, I'm actually the first Hispanic woman elected to office in the state of Delaware in my role as city council. So, you know, yes, that ceiling was broken. And I am reaching my hand out to get other women and other people from my community to get involved, even if it just means on a local level with school boards, with committees, even the city committee seats which are coming up, to getting people engaged. Because that vote does make a difference, and I'm very passionate about that. But I got it honest. I got it from my mother, who was leading and doing things in a time that I wasn't even aware of some of the things that she did, like standing up to the Ku Klux Klan and standing up to the police in Westchester when they shot a Hispanic man going into an ambulance. I found those things out after her death, July 22nd, and tried to put together a beautiful biography to capture her life and everything that she contributed to this world, to her community and to us, her children and her family. And I found out stories from her friends. And those things must have happened when I was seven or eight years old and I wasn't as involved in what mom was doing. And I found that out about my mother. So I guess the apple didn't fall far from the tree. And this is my passion, this is my calling, and I will fight to the bitter end to help my community and others and beyond.
Well spoken, well said. And we know here at Hands to Present Podcast that, you know, and even my conversation with you, I know that, you know, you do it for all the right reasons and you're very passionate about your work. But again, I have to give you your credit and your flowers and your just do for all you've done. So your mom is the person who influenced you to get into politics. That's an interesting thing, because a lot of people, you know, we need more leaders and young leaders to get into politics. But a lot of people avoid the politics. So you're telling me your mom's actions, your mom's work is what driven you to want to be, get into politics and want to serve the people?
Well, no, my mother didn't drive me to do that. What my mother drove me to do was that I, since I was a teenager, I got involved. So while she was busy working and getting people registered to vote, my mother was also taking people out to vote. So she was a very big part of the get out the vote. So my mother got her driver's license late in life. And it was so cute to see her running around. She had this lime green Pontiac, oh God, what's it called? It was a Pontiac and it had a white top and it was lime green with stripes. So it was crazy, because you have this woman driving around in this car and she is taking people to vote. She's getting them out there to vote. So I became involved in the sense that the gentleman who was head of the Republican Party in Westchester, Steve Hansel, he said, "Well, would you like to help out too? You can give out the ballots." So I had roller skates. Like when I first got my job through the youth employment program, my very first paycheck, me and my best friend, we went and got roller skates. So I would roller skate from one end of Westchester to the other. So on my roller skates, I would go out and give out the sample ballots to the apartment buildings in the Latin community and places like that. And that was my contribution. And then we would go to the Elks Club and celebrate, you know, the wins and all that stuff. And so I got bit by that. So to me, I guess ever since I was a teenager, I've been handing, I've been giving out campaign material. So when I came and I moved to Wilmington, I was 25 years old. And I moved here still in search of working in television and, you know, just being that, you know, that first Hispanic woman, you know, to break through the networks. But it was always cable and little things like that. But I came to Wilmington because literally at a party in my home, through a series of connections, there was someone who worked for a car dealership. And I know that Telemundo needed, wanted to get a car dealership to advertise. So I was able to make that connection, because I was literally selling ads for Telemundo, who was stationed in Wilmington on A Street. So I moved here to be closer to Telemundo and to work with them. And the dealership needed someone by Linlul to sell cars, which was the last thing in life I wanted to do. But I ended up making that career change, selling cars, working with Telemundo. And 30 days later, they moved to Spring Garden, Philadelphia, where they still are. So there went that. But I've been involved in cable. So I met Twin B Brown through a mutual friend. And he was working on Mayor Sills's campaign when he was running the first time. And I said, "Well, I've worked on campaigns before." And yes, I've done television shows through the history of my teenage years. So he said, "Well, could you come on board and host some television shows with the Hispanic community? Because he needs to get the Hispanic vote." So that is how I got involved. I was literally volunteering, hosting television shows, getting people from the community to come and endorse James A. Sills Jr., who then went ahead to win the primary and win the election and become the first African American mayor. And as an afterthought, my friend said, "You should ask him for a job." I never even thought about that. And I did. And he sat down and told me the only job left was the receptionist position and that I was overqualified. So I proceeded to sell myself and tell him why it was important to have someone who is overqualified at the front desk, because that's where everybody's going to make the initial contact, trying to reach him. He gave me the job and 90 days later, I became the Special Events Coordinator, because that position opened up. He said, "I'll give you the job, but as soon as another position opens up, I'm going to give it to you." So that is really how I got started in politics in Wilmington. I'd never had the desire to run for office. In fact, people kept telling me that I should run for years and years. And I always had a joke, when people say, "You should run for office," I said, "Yes, I'm running from office." I am that person that you want behind the scenes. I am the person who's going to help you get elected. Like I can sell a candidate, but I was never, I never had aspirations to be the candidate. And it was Senator Margaret Rose Henry, who then became that person who nudged me and pushed me and said, "You need to do this. This is it. This is the right time." At that point, there was a vacant position on city council at large. And she said, and I was scared, I'll admit it, I was scared. I said, "No, no, maybe next time." She says, "No, it's harder to run against an incumbent. Better to run when there's an empty seat. What are you scared of? You've done the work. You've been there. People know you. You have credibility in this community. This should be a no brainer for you to run." And scared to death, there I went. I gathered the money and I went and I filed to run for office.
There you have it.
Eight years ago.
All started from some roller skates. See, see what can happen when you get a pair of roller skates?
That's what happens, yeah.
Car of roller skates, we all into it. Now, we met through, for those who don't know, me and Maria, we met through Twin B Brown, actually. We were called to host an episode, excuse me, of the Spiritual Revival Hour. And me and you didn't meet before hosting. We spoke on the phone briefly. And at the time, we were asked to host it, we were both very busy, but we still got together. And like last minute, I think we did pretty good. What do you think?
I thought we did. I thought we were, I thought we were a good, a good pair, good partner. So we can certainly host some more things together in the future. Because I, you know, this is the way that people communicate. People communicate visually. People aren't really reading anymore. I have to admit though, for me, I still prefer to read through material, because I read very quickly than, you know, to sit and watch videos. So my son is the video person, I'm not. But I know that statistics show that more people will gather their information from videos, from television, they're visual learners, which is why I've always, television has always been, you know, my passion. I started in radio when I was 16. I left that out. But the TV thing, I was good at it. And they told me I was a natural. And so I guess, you know, but you and I can definitely do some things together, because I believe educating the community is important. Sometimes people give so much misinformation out there and folks base their decisions on that without really doing the research and hearing from different voices. So I would like to think that I'm a trusted voice in this community and that I will give you the facts and you can determine how, you know, you think about something. But I know that I'm going to do my due diligence too, before I make decisions and that I'm going to do my research, so that if people are trusting me to make a decision on their behalf, that there is, that established trust is there. But I do believe in educating folks and communicating with them. I'm a communicator. Because I feel that the more information that you're armed with, then you can make a decision. And it could be a good decision. Sometimes it might be a bad decision. But at least you're able to take a stand and make a decision. And that is important. Building consensus and reaching out and really making people feel that they're being heard and that they're being respected, because you're including them in the process. So even if we have to do it visually, especially now with this pandemic, then let's do it and let's reach as many people as we can. But I still love my face to face. I love being with people. I thrive off their energy. That just emboldens me and it empowers me when I'm with people. I love that people energy.
Absolutely. Again, we definitely have to do more together, because we had a great time hosting the show together. And I agree with everything you said, because that's really important. And one of the things I always stress with this show, I spend a lot of time doing researches for the episodes, so I always tell people, listen, these episodes are not something I just bring up one day, wake up one morning and say, "Hey, I'm going to record." It takes months of preparation to do some of these episodes. Some episodes took me a couple of years just to get the information. I never come on the show until I feel fully prepared and comfortable with the information that was discussed. And if I'm not, I'll put it off. But we're going to talk about something what we spoke about in the Spiritual Revival Hour before we get into some of the heavy things that we want to talk about. I want to talk about voting. This year was one of the most interesting times with the pandemic going on, with everything with COVID-19. It caused a lot of ruckus and issues in the voting system. In fact, it took us to find out three to four days later, who was going to be our president. During this issue and during this time, there was a lot of accusations, accusations about our voting system and how it was fraud, it was voting fraud. I know that you don't have all the information background on what was or wasn't happening. But in your opinion, what are your thoughts about what people were talking about with voter fraud? Now, me personally, I didn't see any evidence of it, but I don't know. You know, you were right for city council. What are your thoughts on what they were saying in this different type of climate we had to go through with voting, especially when you were up for a seat during this?
Well, I mean, I think that here locally, I feel that we were unscathed by what was happening on a national platform. Because no one questioned the Delaware vote, because we tend to vote blue. I mean, we go blue. So, but when we're looking at the national spectrum, I will say that voter fraud, not, I don't, I don't even, I want to say that it's so much fraud as it is disenfranchisement of people, has existed everywhere and it has existed here as well. And I think we've kind of moved a little bit beyond that here locally. But when you make it, well, let's just say that here locally, we had an incident, right? Because of COVID, the Latin American Community Center, which has always been a voting site, right? They said, "Well, I'm sorry, we had a daycare going on. We still have things, services going on. We can't risk letting people in the building." And that's a very valid concern. So, and actually, no, it wasn't even the Latin American Community Center, I'm sorry. It was, it was J Streets. It was the place, oh, what's it called? I forgot the name of it. It was the community. It was his, the daycare there. And, and they closed that. So the people in that hilltop area were told they had to go to Deltech to vote, right? So Deltech at Fourth, you know, Fourth and Market, and that was going to be Fourth and Shipley. That was going to be prohibitive for people who didn't have transportation, who don't drive. And it really started a ruckus. So everybody kind of gave some pushback and they said, "No, well then, what we're going to do now is instead of people going to Deltech, we're going to have them go to the church instead, the Greek church." So then that is what happened. And there was confusion. And people felt like they were being disenfranchised, that they were tricking them and they were making it harder for them to vote. But that was an innocent mistake. And it was not even a mistake. It was they were trying to find a solution, because we knew that they couldn't go into their normal voting site and for valid reasons. Now, what we saw on a national spectrum was the opposite. What did we see happen in Texas? When you had the voter boxes to the people could go to the nearest one in their county and just go and drop their ballots off? Because I think that the mail-in ballots, that in dropping off the ballots, I think that was the safest thing that we could do and we should continue to do that moving forward. Those parameters that we put in place for safety reasons for COVID should be kept. Because how about all those seniors in the interim and the people who want to vote, but they're not able to physically go out and vote? We're not allowing their voices to be heard when we make it prohibitive. So when, when I'm happy to see that a lot of states try to make it more inclusive, these people push back. And you know why they push back, right? In places like Texas and Florida and other places? Because they knew that this particular election was a little different. This had a different flavor, because when Hillary ran for office, through all the misinformation that people got through Facebook, through social media, through basically what has been proven that the Russians and others weren't involved and they meddled in our elections, we were hacked. And people are gullible. They believe everything they hear, they read and they see. And they're not doing their research and they're still doing it. We have so many conspiracy theories going around, even with COVID and now with the vaccine. It's like, how are we ever going to be able to overcome this if we keep feeding into the lies? That affected a US election. We ended up with Trump, even though Hillary had gotten more of the popular vote. That was crazy, right? And I think that people realize that, because when people say things to me and I'm like, "Did you vote?" "No." "All right, then you were responsible for Trump being there, so shut up. You have no right to even say anything to me at this point." I think a lot of black and brown people fed into those horrible messages that were being said about Hillary that were so untrue, still to this date, the most qualified person who has ever run for president. And here we were, we got stuck with Donald and all the hate and everything that came out of his mouth. And I just don't understand how we got here, but we got here. And I believe that what happens with that last election is the people said, "We can't take any chances. We better get out there and vote." And so many people voted and so many young people voted. You know, okay, Obama's not on the ticket, but we're going to go out there and vote, because that's when we had the most youth votes, was when Obama ran for office. And then when Biden picked Kamala, oh my gosh, you know, now you got the women and the people of color saying, "We're going to do this." So I believe that the opposition party saw that the organization was there. What Stacey Abrams have done with that get out the vote movement all around. I mean, listen, this is when you take one thing, you become impassioned, you work on it, you do it, you do it well. And this is what happens, change. Change begins with one person believing. And it becomes contagious and others believe and so on and so on. And it's spread and it's spread nationwide. And I'm still disappointed with the Latinos in Florida and Texas, who did not come out to really, really wanted to support Biden when all was said and done. And I know everybody had their reasons. But we have to do a better job to reach out as the Democrats to the Latino community, because there were still more votes there, I believe, that we didn't get. And I still don't know how they could possibly support Trump, but some did. And I was very disappointed with that when I heard that. So I really would love to help President Biden with more outreach into the Latino community. So next time around, that's not even on the table to be discussed. But with that happening and the fear, they did everything they could to try to stop our votes. And we saw that. And then to turn around and tell this lie, because people knew this was coming, they literally, literally worked harder to make sure that this election was fraud, foolproof. Understanding that some people might vote incorrectly, it could be an oversight, it could have been done on purpose, but they caught a lot of that. So it was never enough to turn the election. You may have had, you know, maybe 40, 50 votes here, maybe 200 over there that shouldn't have been counted, but not thousands and thousands. So then what they did was, what they do best, what Trump does best, he spreads a lie and people begin to believe it. And then it spreads across the board. But if you were, if your election was stolen, then why did all those other Republicans get elected in the very states where Biden won, but you didn't? Because they didn't want you. And the Republicans are still scared of him. But they don't want him. And they're hoping that somehow he will disappear and go away. And now we're going to have to do the dirty work, because they're still not standing up to impeach him.
Right.
But we'll see what happens. But yeah, that does flow into the local a little bit. But I think here, we're doing a better job to not, you know, to avoid people feeling that their vote doesn't count.
No, I agree, I agree. One of the issues that we have is, like I said, miscommunication, misinformation. A lot of times what people do is, we don't fact check the information given. We expect news agencies and major news companies to be giving us information. If it does, they report it, that's correct. A lot of times, it's not even local or the bigger news channel. It's what we read on social media. I gotta tell my son all the time, the stuff that you read on YouTube, see on YouTube and what you read on social media is not true. My son tries to send me a store to get some kind of cookies that doesn't exist. I'm telling him like, "Where did you hear about these cookies from?" "Oh dad, they were on YouTube, like, son." Everything that's on YouTube is not real. Everything that you see or purchase on YouTube is not real. Like YouTube and life are two totally different things. People pick up stuff, create stuff. But despite that, we still have this, we had this misconception that what we see is real that because people generate these videos and put these videos out that, or give information that support our beliefs, ours conspiracy theories, that it becomes true. And when it does, then we start to spread that truth, which is not the truth, but our truth. And it causes issues that generates a whole bigger problem and snowballs into the division that we currently have in our country right now.
It creates an element of doubt. See, because at this point, it doesn't matter whether it's true or false. There is an element of doubt. And we are all susceptible to this. We are. Including educated people who do research like myself. Now, let's just say that the vaccine comes out, right? Vaccine came out. There was so much stuff being spread about the vaccine and a lot of it again on YouTube. See, this is, my sons love to send me YouTube stuff. And I told him, "You send me another piece of crap, I'm going to block you."
No, me too. The people don't say anything to me. Send me YouTube stuff like, okay.
And then they, they're so passionate about it. And I'm trying to tell them that anybody can create a video. Didn't AOC do that just to prove it? Didn't she say something about Mitch McConnell that was absolutely untrue? But everybody was believing it. And Mitch was so upset, because now people were believing it, that he was on board with the Democrats. Because, and she did that to prove how gullible we are and how easily we believe these things. So myself, I'll give the example of myself. So now, I'm on the Latino Leaders Call with Lieutenant Bethany Hallon. And they have a doctor on there to talk about the vaccine. Now, I work in healthcare. We have a healthcare agency, my daughter, and I'm out there seeing clients. So I'm literally at the top of the list to get that vaccine. And I never signed up for it until last week, because of a close call. And I was just waiting. First of all, I would rather somebody else get the vaccine that needs it maybe more than I, because I'm really like, I could be the COVID inspector. I'm very, very strict and very, very careful. But still, the pressure is, I'm breaking down under the pressure. So I finally called and got my name on the list. But I too was scared about taking the vaccine. And I said, "I was going to wait." And that I might actually wait a whole year, because I want to see if there's any after effects. And I was believing some of the hype. Not that I was believing it, but it put an element of doubts in my mind that maybe I too should wait. That maybe we got to make sure that it's safe. But then I got on that call and a doctor explained it. And then I saw another way to explain it. And then I realized, I said, "Wait a second. This is no different than when we get the flu vaccine and other vaccines and we're letting our children get vaccinated to prevent other diseases that they came up with vaccines." Why? To save lives. I mean, this has happened with polio, with everything that was invented to, you know, to keep us safe. Measles, rubella, diphtheria, the HPV vaccine. We have scientists, we have technology. At some point, either we trust or we don't trust. And I got to the point, I said, "You know what? It was explained to me." See, this is where education is supportive and important. What we're doing here is important, because if we can educate people and explain it to them, and I was able to bring it down to simple terms and explain it, now I got people who say, "You know what? I think I am going to get the vaccine, because now it's been clearly explained to me how it works." And now I called and I got my name on the list to get the vaccine. But you see how one little thing just gives you that element of doubt? And even someone like Maria Cabrera, who I consider myself, you know, pretty educated. If not, I'm going to find it. I'm going to research the information. Even I fell for it.
Because there's a problem, a lot of people don't want to research the information and look at it. And as far as vaccines concerned, I'll say this, I'm not, like, being working in healthcare, I was given the option to get the vaccine first personally. I said, "We want to wait, give it a second first before I get to it." But what I've been careful to do is not speak too heavy on it, because, you know, there's two sides of everything. I don't have all the facts about the vaccine. Like I said, I don't have all the facts, I'm not going to speak one. So I do have all the information. Speaking of the black community, one of the issues with the black community is the history is, we got to go back to Tuskegee experiments.
Yes, yes.
A lot of times, when you had nurses and doctors who were telling black people to join these experiments to stop the bad blood disease, only come to find out, they truly wasn't even trying to cure syphilis or some of these people who are gone for this experiment didn't even have syphilis. So naturally, a lot of black people are suspicious about any vaccine or vaccination. Or vaccination of their children or themselves and not quickly jump to the front line for those reasons. Other than that being a reason for not doing it, I mean, truthfully, my, my advice would be to people, is what I say to people all the time. Don't believe what I say, do your own research. Even when I talk on the show, do your own research, fact check everything I say. And you know, get the information you need. Talk to a doctor or a healthcare provider, or even use a site that. You feel comfortable with what you believe. Listen to who you believe and you trust to make the right choice as far as getting the vaccine. Or not getting the vaccine, regardless of your choice on it, still take proper precautions, wearing masks, washing your hands and other things to prevent COVID. It's still very serious, a very dangerous thing, whether you do have the vaccine or not. We still have to do our part if we wanna get back to normalcy in the world. We're gonna have to all do our part to, to get this pandemic to end. I mean. I don't wanna go back into the office, but at the same time, you know, I wanna go back out to be able to go to restaurants, take my kids out to play to parks and. Interact with people instead of being stuck in the house doing stir crazy. But, um.
I don't wanna be hyper alert, because when you're hyper alert and you have to be careful and you're always, always having to be. Alert about making sure you wash your hands, that you do everything you're supposed to do. I mean, most of this has become a habit. I've worked in home care and healthcare, so you know, obviously washing hands has always been a habit. I've worked in food, you know, I've had a restaurant. Washing my hands, wearing gloves when I prepare my food. I still wear gloves when I prepare food at home. I'm, I'm just very careful. I have that degree. But walking around, trying to make sure that I stay safe and keep family members, and especially taking care of my mother when she was in her end stage in hospice. And making sure that other family members were doing the same. I'm gonna tell you right now, my nerves, I'm, I'm shot. I mean, I, I really am. Just so tight and on edge all the time, because what happens is. You know, when you're in a state of emergency, that adrenaline releases in your body. I feel like I am in constant release of adrenaline. To stay hyper alert, to stay alive, to stay safe and to keep the people around me that I love safe, to keep my clients safe in the home care industry, so. Uh, you know, I would say to anybody like the African American community, because we know the numbers are high, so obviously wanting to vaccinate the African American community is a priority. And the Hispanic community. I mean, look at our poultry workers in Lower Delaware, they have been hit very hard and our Latin American countries. I would say is, look at who's trying to jump the list. Look at who's paying money to try to get the vaccine. Look who's really fighting to get the vaccine. It's the rich people and the, it's the rich people and it's the white people, so. I don't think we have to worry about this being experimental in our communities. I think what we have to worry about is making sure that we have access to the vaccine. So that other people who are jumping the line get it and we're still dying from COVID. So, but I understand the fear because there is a precedence for that. Because, you know, the trust has been broken, so to gain that trust back, especially with these things, when people feel that they were experiments. I completely get it. I completely get it. But that's why people like you and I have to make sure we go a step further to become educated about it. And to, you know, just sway those fear away from the community that needs this the most. So I think that that's something to look at. Look who's trying to get the vaccine. It may not be the black folks, it's the white folks, so you know, the safe for them is gonna be safe for you. So, get your vaccine.
There you go. Once again, we'll say again, educate yourself. The importance of, understand people don't like reading, don't have time to read. But you must read and educate yourself on information. Like, I would say, I wanna do more education, educate myself on the vaccine. And speak more on it to give more information out there to you. The important thing is, is not to fall for conspiracy theories. A lot of us form issues. And fall victims to conspiracy theories. And all information that's available is not correct information. There have been tabloids, magazines and newspapers for years. All kinds of things exist in years. That don't mean it's true, just because it's printed in black and white or just cause someone created videos. So understand the difference. Like I told you. My son sends me to a supermarket every other day, buying something off YouTube that he thinks exists, but it really doesn't. But, you know, you have to be, we have to all be smart enough to go out here and educate ourselves, but also know that even. You know a lot, or you see, you feel like you're an educated, intelligent person, that even me, and I tell you all the time, I don't know everything. So please, some questions don't ask me. I don't know everything. I still have a lot to learn too, that's why I have Ms. Cabrera, Cabrera here with me today to educate me on some things. Such as, cause I wanna switch gears, um, Ms. Cabrera, City Councilwoman Cabrera, to talk about something that I know is very important to you. I want to make sure we get into this right now, because I want to make sure my, uh, audience are educated on this. The Blights Bill. Let's jump into it, the Blight Bill. It's been a controversial bill in Wilmington. I know it's been, um. Rewritten a few times, we're trying to get it to pass. I know you're working on getting to pass right now. Me and you spoke about it briefly through text. We spoke about it before we started the show. Can you please educate my audience on what is the Blight Bill and why should they care about the Blight Bill?
Okay, well, I think that it was nicknamed the Blight Bill because it, it's, it's to combat the blight that exists in our neighborhoods, but. Because this bill has been beat up so many times and restructured so many times because. Of fears that people had, some valid, some not. Um, I, I'm calling it by its name. It's a housing reform. Amendment to chapter thirty-four of the city code. And if I'm gonna give it a nickname, it's gonna be a neighborhood stabilization bill, because what? Cause it's designed to combat blight. So I understand that the bill, when it first came out. It included vacant properties, it included property owners who should still also be held accountable. And it included the renters and the landlords and of course, the properties that haven't been registered. And what they were trying to do, to be efficient, is put everything together in one package, but it turns out the different aspects of it was being attacked. Now, what I wanna make sure that people are clear about this bill is this. This is changing the code from criminal to civil. I don't want anybody to think that anything that is being introduced is new. It is not new. These co- city codes already exist in the code. That we're talking about, chapter thirty-four. These are amendments that are being made. Basically, we're changing it from how it's enforced. Versus how it was then, which is the criminal, how they want it now would be the civil. And why? Why is that important? Okay, well, let's, let's do an exercise here. Let's say that you called the city, right? Because there's a property on your block, it could even be your neighbor next door. You know, they might have a leaky roof and it's starting to come into your part of your property that you own. And that happens to be a rental, right? So you call, you, you know, you try to talk to the landlord, the person, the property owner next door. You know, the people over there complaining too, because they're living and they're, you know, when it starts raining, they gotta catch the rain with buckets and stuff and it might be in their kid's room. And now they got mold on the walls. Let, let's just use that example, cause that's actually very common. So now you're calling, the guy doesn't see, oh yeah, yeah, I'm gonna get somebody out there. You see that nothing is being done to really. Try to even patch it up and fix it. So now you call the city and say, oh, you know, there's a property, this is happening, my house, blah, blah, blah. The city comes in, they cite the landlord, they say, you gotta fix this. The landlord says, well, whatever, I'll pay the ticket. It's just the price of doing business, cheaper to pay the ticket than to, than to, uh, fix it, or. They might just ignore it altogether. So now they ignored it, they didn't fix it, blah, blah, blah. The city goes, has to file in court. It goes through that process, maybe a few months later, maybe a month or two letter, you know, they get the letter that they have to fix this, okay? So the landlord knows that now it's become, it's in the system, right? It's in the judicial system. So now he knows he's gonna have to go to court. Well, we already know the delays in the courts and how that works. So it might be nine months before he literally has to stand before a judge. And he has an option. He can fight it, refute it, or pay the fines, or just say, screw it. Let me just fix it before I go to court. So now it might be nine to twelve months before that leak is actually fixed. It's gotten worse and there's mold on the walls. So, and it's actually more expensive, but that's the route they chose to take, because it's easier just to pay. And that's the price of doing business than to fix it. And then hoping that the city is so busy and the inspector that they will go away. And that is the process. And then you are saying, I called the city and they didn't do anything. See, this is what happens. These people are my tax dollars and nobody ever does anything. Not even understanding, oh, and they always have an excuse. They're blaming it on the courts. Not understanding that this is the current process and it takes forever for you to solve a problem. For you, and maybe that property should be condemned. Maybe nobody's actually living in it and it's vacant, but the water's still coming into your property. And the vacants, what, to get, to get a vacant, take it away from somebody who owns a vacant property and won't do anything with it? That process is just as long in the criminal version. So this is why they wanted to turn these things over to civil, because what happens with civil is that we can set a timeline. And we don't have to involve, involve a judge. So what this legislation is saying is. You have thirty days before you even get a fine. You're being given a notice and that violation is the notice. You have thirty days to fix it. Let's say COVID, you can't get a repairman. It's raining and snowing, you can't get out there and paint or fix something. Alright, call the inspector. Call the commissioner, just say, listen, I need more time. I'm willing to do this. I fixed a couple of the things that you mentioned. Uh, but I gotta, I need more time to get this done. From what I understand, and this is speaking to the actual landlords. The inspectors have always been flexible with them and so has the city. Nobody has come after anybody. With, and had not given them the additional time that they needed. They just need to ask for it. But let's go to the guy who doesn't care. Got the violations in the mail, doesn't do anything. He is now going to get the fine. And he's gonna get a notice, letting him know that you're now gonna get this fine. The fine is gonna be two hundred and fifty dollars. In the criminal version, the fine would keep going up, two fifty, five hundred, seven fifty, a thousand, and it just keeps accumulating. And in the criminal version, you're gonna get fined daily after the thirty days. In the civil version, you're gonna get fined in blocks of seven consecutive days. And it's only gonna be two fifty. It's not gonna escalate. So now you're holding them accountable, you gotta put that price on it, and you do have to continue to give them the, the fines. Because that is what's gonna push them to action. So maybe when the fine gets up steep enough, they're gonna get in there and they're gonna fix it. But let's say that it doesn't. We're gonna have to put a timeline on it. So if you are going to ignore and not even communicate with the city and fix this property. Then we're gonna start the process in sixty days to put a lien with the fines on your taxes. And you're gonna have a lien, which then could go to foreclosure. And when people say, cause this is one of the things we hear. But if the city does that, then those landlords are gonna lose their properties and then the people are gonna get evicted. And then they're not gonna have a place to live and then we have more homelessness. A lot of what ifs, what isms is what I call them. If you honestly believe that somebody who owns a property, even in the worst neighborhood, that property has a value. Could be fifty thousand dollars, could be seventy-five, it might not be two hundred thousand, but it's gonna have a value. And if you're telling me as a landlord that you have people living in that house and you're collecting a monthly rent. That you would allow the city to take your property to foreclosure instead of paying a fine? And fixing the property and bringing it up to code the way you should by law anyway? This isn't just a city law, this is state. This is federal housing laws that exist. We have to follow the law. We have, we have those codes, why? So that people can live safely in their homes. So I'm confused with the argument. That you wanna give these landlords all this extra time to not do their job. Being a landlord and having a property is a business. Can you walk into, can you start a business? Can you go to Market Street Mall? Open up a restaurant and not have a business license and not have the place inspected and not make sure that it's up to code? And let's say that you have a restaurant and they find a code violation? You think the Board of Health isn't gonna shut you down until you clean it up? We're not even shutting you down. We're, we're giving you time to fix it, to fix it. They're gonna shut you down. And in some cases with our nuisance laws, have we not shut down nuisance properties that are now out of business? So why are they complaining when the laws already exist? The law is there for everybody. Why should landlords be exempt? From the same rules and regulations that everybody is? And worse yet, they have people living in those homes that are being affected. So if somebody has a water leak and then you're telling them that they have to pay the water bill, but you refuse to fix the water leak. And now you're evicting them because they haven't paid the water bill. I mean, come on, folks. Now, let's do another scenario. There is actually data that shows that children that live in deplorable homes, homes that are not maintained, that they do worse in school. Children who come from stable home environments, their living arrangements do better in school. So when we talk about the issues that Wilmington faces, like education, our children not getting properly educated, the trauma that they go through. And then coming out of school and not being able to get a job, which leads to what? Maybe involvement in the streets? Let's talk about crime. And I'm gonna tell you, cause I'm coming prepared on Thursday, the committee meeting is February eleventh. I'm coming prepared. I am gonna show the direct correlation with the highest part one crimes in the city of Wilmington. To where the highest code violations exist and the most rental properties exist, the blighted communities. And they go hand in hand. I promise you, the numbers are going to completely overlay. So when we talk about crime and our young people being shot in these streets and losing life in these streets. It's happening in these neighborhoods. And how about the people that are being held hostage in those neighborhoods? The little old lady who can't move away, whose property values keep going down because of these blighted properties. And she'll just have to. Die in this hell that she's living in because she can't get out of there. The people who can't move out for economics. How about the good renters that are there just trying to make a home for their families and they're living in these deplorable conditions? Are we not gonna support them? Are we gonna not stand for them? And how about homeowners? Even though this bill does not include homeowners. You have homeowners who are just as guilty of not fixing their properties, but they're gonna be dealt with, with the criminal system. So they're out. And the vacant properties, if there's more that needs to be done there, that's being dealt under separate legislation, cause there's vacant property legislation. This one is basic. This is very basic, Alan. Fix it or get fined. And if you own, if you decide that you can just buy your property and automatically become a landlord and you know how to be a business owner and be a landlord. Then you need to register your business. And that's what you have to do like everybody else. And I would advise anybody who wants to get into this business, make sure that you have the funds, because sometimes your, your tenants won't pay rent. And it's a long process to evict them. You need to be able to fix those properties up if something goes wrong and sometimes people damage your property. So you shouldn't go into this not having the resources to have homes that are up to code. And it's very simple. Now, people are saying that the city wants to do a land grab. How is this a land grab? Because the bottom line is, you're not gonna let your property go if it's making money for you and you're collecting money. Then if you do let it go, it's gonna become a vacant, it's gonna go into the land bank and it's gonna go into the homestead program. Which is focused on what? People buying properties up and becoming homeowners, not developers, not people, uh, coming in here. To, to further bring in more and more rentals and not take care of them. And we have some great landlords in the city, so they, of all people, should be concerned that the law should be fair for everybody. But the people that we need to focus on protecting here are the actual renters by making sure that these houses are up to code. Um, so I firmly believe that this is a good piece of legislation. We're giving, um, the people who need to register their properties. A six-month amnesty. So basically, they don't have, they can register those properties and they have until January first, twenty twenty-two. Where the enforcement is gonna take place. The landlords, especially during COVID, they're being given leniency. If they need more time to fix the code violations, a flat two fifty, it's not escalating and now blocks of seven instead of a daily fine. And there is a, an appeal process that is twenty days instead of ten days, which it was in the criminal version. So I, I believe it's a solid piece of legislation and we're making a few more tweaks because of the feedback that I've gotten from the landlord association. From people in the community. And I'm really doing as much as I can to build consensus, to hear from everybody that was an opponent. That had an issue. Uh, the Homes Group that is doing a lot to talk about housing equity in Wilmington, they have some really excellent points. Some of what they're presenting is not something that could be legislated or put into this legislation. That doesn't mean that their concerns would go unheard, because that's stuff that we can work on immediately. And it might be different legislation to address that. But I believe that if they're talking about rental equity and people being able to live in safe housing, this bill actually addresses that. It addresses the issues that some of their members gave, um, in a recent, um, program that they did on, on Zoom. They did a presentation. And they're invited to do a presentation the same day of my committee meeting, February eleventh, because we wanna educate people about what they're working on. And I think it's really good, solid work. But you can't oppose this legislation and say you're for renters being treated fair. Because this legislation is not gonna cause anybody to be evicted. It's not gonna cause a landlord to sell their property, because I just got off the phone with a Realtor. People are selling, because it's a seller's market. You can sell a property right now for more money than what it's really worth. So if you're a business person and you have some rental properties you wanna unload, you're gonna do that. This legislation is not stopping anybody from doing that. From, from not selling their properties. That, so that, these are all the, the things that people are saying, the what isms. So I, I wanna address them and. We'll address them February eleventh and I'm gonna keep doing it until the legislation goes in for a vote, because I want input. And I want people to know that their concerns are being validated and heard and some changes are being made. But the legislation is going forth and it will be voted into. Into existence.
Alright, I'm wishing with them full support in helping that legislation get passed. And one of the things I heard when listening to you talk were. You basically addressed a lot of loopholes that were formerly used by landlords and slum lords, I'm putting in these terms. Slum lords who.
That's what they are.
Hear about these properties in Wilmington areas, who are allowing people to live in, um, very bad situations. Very bad, we're not just talking about leaking roofs. We're talking about, we hear stories of toilets with mold and they're hanging on by mold. We heard about not only just leaks, tubs with issues, all kinds of horrible conditions.
Heating systems? How about heating systems? How about, think about the row fires we've had, people using kerosene heaters. Because the heating system wasn't heating their home. Those were lives that were lost. Those are other properties that are affected with, by a fire. You know, think about that, cause I think about that all the time. Those are people's lives. Those are people's lives that could have been prevented had there been an inspection, had those houses been up to code.
Yeah, exactly. And the thing I heard like, okay, so one of the things I heard people will talk about, well, it's going to affect the um with the COVID nineteen out here, people don't have the finances to get things fixed. Well, you addressed that issue where you said, okay, we're giving you a certain amount of period of time to actually get, so we can't sit here using excuse that I can't get someone out here to fix these issues because of COVID. No, we have, you said thirty days to have time to get a contract out here to fix the issue. Also giving people fines because one of the issues you did mention, and I like how this addresses all of the excuses that people would make and all the loopholes. It also covers the loopholes, like you said. Formerly these slum lords would do is say, okay, why fix a roof that may cost me four thousand dollars for a brand new roof? I'll just pay a two hundred dollar fine and let this continue on. But also protecting as a homeowner, as a homeowner, protecting our value. One of the things when I went to purchase my house, what I talked to my wife about was, look at the neighborhood, look at how your neighbors are treating their house. Look at how people are keeping their house up. Now, if you've got vacant homes or you have homeowners who are mistreating their homes or leaving vacant homes around, yes, you are destroying the value of other people's property. If you have homeowners who are landlords who don't care about fixing or upgrading their property, then what does it do for the other people that's living in this neighborhood, but also about the tenants? Now, as far as, I know another thing that people talked about was um homeowners and how it would affect homeowners who don't necessarily have the finances to uh be able to get things fixed. I get it. And once again, as a homeowner, like recently, my hot water heater just decided it wanted to start leaking. I had to replace that eleven hundred bucks. But you know, you still have to get things done and thank God.
This legislation isn't touching homeowners right now. They're just going to stay under the current criminal system.
How does it affect the criminal system? Like how would it affect the homeowners?
Well, I mean, they're already part of it. They're going to get fines and the fines are going to escalate to five hundred, to seven fifty, to a thousand. They're going to go to court. A lien can still be put on their property. If the judge says yes, they have to do this. They're going to have a daily fine instead of fines in blocks of seven. I mean, the system, nothing's going to be done. It's not going to change the code. The code already exists. That's where I think that there's been a little bit of misunderstanding with this because if folks think that this is new legislation that we're putting forward, that this is something new that's being added, this is not new. There's some changes that were made to make it better and more user friendly in the civil version of it. But all of this already exists in the criminal version. It is part of the city's code. And it has to be because we have to follow the national standards which are put forth for housing, housing laws. These are part of the housing laws. The only thing the city is trying to do is, we're trying to come up to, we want to actually bring it up to be at the same level that the county is and that the state is. The county has civil, criminal, and there's another one, administrative, ways that they can enforce their housing codes. We're just asking for civil on this particular portion. They were asking for all of it, but they didn't get it and that's okay. That, I think that while I'm there and I'm a good communicator, I like to think that, that I will do my due diligence to work with all the groups and the people who have concerns. And we're going to revisit the, the, oh, the homeownership part of it because the landlords are upset. They're like, well, why are you holding us accountable to making sure our properties are up to date? But now our properties that we invested and that we put up to keep up to date and make that and, you know, make those repairs and people live well? Now I got a homeowner next door whose house is like crap and nobody's coming after them. And it's going to take about two years in the criminal process before you can get them to do anything. In the meantime, property values go down, right? And right now, property values are, you know, going up. So imagine if you're in a neighborhood that's stabilized, it doesn't have light. You can have a better neighborhood, you have better quality of life, the children can play outside. And guess what? You're not going to have a shooting and crazy stuff happen. It could happen, but I'm saying it's not going to happen because those people don't hang out there because there's eyes and ears. You have neighbors that are out there taking care of their properties, you know, sitting outside on their porch. You go into some of these neighborhoods, and let me tell you how I came to this um because all this L and I stuff was never, I was never interested in any of this. When I came on council, it was about education, youth and families, economic development, businesses, the cable commission, the TV. I, no, none of this. I was not interested in any of this. But when that first shooting happened in January and I sat there so excited to be a councilwoman and I was so happy, just got the inauguration and then I look and I see that a young man had, was killed at, I think it was twenty-second and Jefferson or something like that by Washington. My heart, I mean, I just, I felt it. I felt the pain immediately. I was in bed, I was crying, I finally came out. Then there was the next one and the next one. So I went there, I drove faster because I wanted to see where it happened. Then I started doing this with every single shooting. And I'm telling you, the police could attest how many times I showed up. And I started putting the math together and drive, then I would drive around the neighborhood later on to see what happened in those neighborhoods at different times. And I made my own deduction that these shootings were taking place. There was always a vacant property around, always within a hundred and fifty feet, always.
I was about to say that because I remember the conversation we were texting back with last week. You had mentioned that to me that you did, you were driving around the neighborhood, you were checking to see where these violent fines were happening. You were doing your own, keeping track of your own numbers, keeping track of your own metrics to find out where a lot of these shootings had happened was. And as you mentioned to me, I agree, these were happening a lot of times in vacant, near vacant homes. And as we drive through Wilmington, we see a lot of vacant homes. Now, maybe it's not as big as, as Philadelphia. However, Wilmington is nowhere near the size of Philadelphia.
Exactly.
With Wilmington being so small, is the amount of vacant homes that surround Wilmington is leaving more um opportunity for more crimes, more shooting, more raping, other things happening, more drug use to continue on.
Exactly.
So it is important that we do put an end to vacant homes and try to revitalize our city and make it a better place. My question is to you, Mr. Cabrera, how can we as private citizens assist with helping this bill uh come to, come to pass? How can we assist? What can we do?
Well, there's two opportunities first. I would love to hear from the community. So April eleventh, uh the agenda is going to present, uh the Homes um group is going to do a presentation, which I'm hoping will, you know, be between thirty to forty-five minutes. And then after that, we're going to go into this legislation because it has to be voted out of committee to go into the council meeting, which would be the following Thursday. So what I would like people to do is to, to zoom in because it's a Zoom link, to participate in the meeting, sign up to be a speaker. And you can sign up to speak and give feedback. I would like to hear from people who, if you do have a question and you're unsettled about this legislation, I would prefer to answer your question before the meeting on the eleventh. Because what I would like you to do is to call into the meeting and say why you support this legislation. Listen, I, I, I'm not going to mince, I'm not going to play games here. We have the seven votes for this legislation to pass. But I don't want this legislation to pass with seven votes. I want other council members who I have been speaking with. I'm doing, uh, we're doing Zoom meetings with Councilwoman Shanae Darby, who's brought up some concerns. She's part of the Homes Group with them on Wednesday. We have another presentation, they put some amendments forward. We are being very thoughtful to listen to everybody's concerns, to address them, to make sure that the questions are being answered. I met with the, I spoke with the, an hour and a half with the head of the Greater Wilmington's Landlord Association. I spoke to one of the landlords, Frank Report. I met with Brian O'Neil on Friday evening. I mean, I've been talking to my council members, Councilwoman Gray, McCoy. I've gotten on the phone with them. I want them to feel comfortable and to address any issues that they have about this because I would really love for this legislation to pass unanimously. But if it doesn't, to at least have nine, ten council members, including the president, on board. Because I believe it's a good piece of legislation, but I need to hear from the community. And they need to hear from you because if there's council members, you might want to call your council member and ask them to support them, support this legislation. That's something else they can do. And let your council members hear you while you're at the committee meeting so that they hear you and see that you're in support of this. That's what I need. But I also want feedback. So if you have, if you're criticizing or feel that there's something wrong in this legislation, I want to hear from you. And I can answer the questions before that Thursday, that'd be great. Otherwise than that, we're going to take all the questions and we're going to answer them. I'm going to have the L and I department there um and the policy analysts and people from the law department. So everybody's going to be there to answer any questions that people have. So participate February eleventh. The meeting starts at five P M. We're probably going to start addressing this around the five thirty, five forty-five P M hour. And then the council meeting is the following Thursday on the eighteenth. You can also sign up for public comment and give your comments at that time. But I do urge people to participate in the committee meeting process because that is truly where we hear from you and we have the ability to make changes. By the time it's going to go for a vote on the floor on the eighteenth, I promise you that I highly doubt that, that I'm not going to pull it. I'm going to tell you that right now, that your comments won't be able to feed into me making any changes that night. But your comments can help me tweak it if you bring up a very valid point before that on the eleventh and even before the eleventh. I just want people to understand the process.
For February eleventh, they need to uh have their comments into you before February eleventh. So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to release this episode earlier than I typically would. You actually have time to be able to respond and to get any questions to uh City Councilwoman Cabrera. In fact, I'm going to make it easier for you since I have direct connections with Ms. Cabrera, direct line to her. If you don't feel comfortable or for some reason you don't have the information, which we will have for you in the description tab, how to get, best way to get in contact with Ms. Cabrera with your questions. If you can't send your, or don't feel comfortable sending your questions directly to uh City Councilwoman Cabrera, I'm opening my email, opening up Facebook, Instagram to me to send your questions to me. I will directly send them uh to City Councilwoman Cabrera so that your voice is heard. We often speak about voting and importance of voting and letting your voice be heard during election. If you are a fan of your, a viewer of this show, you know, I talked about it all at the end of last year, into beginning this year, let your voice be heard outside of the just the election box. You have uh City Councilwoman Cabrera telling you, listen, I'm, I want to speak concern. I want to answer your concern.
I'm accessible.
To sit here and tell me what's your thoughts on it. You have the option to speak about your city and the changes that are made. You bring a valid point, that says she can't change, she can't change the amendment, but what she can do is she can tweak it. So if you bring valid points, here's your opportunity. For all those people out here saying, I don't want to vote because my vote don't matter. Well, City Councilwoman Cabrera is telling you all, give your thoughts, give your comments. What do you want to see with this? Speak, speak. So I don't want to hear no more people telling me, my voice don't matter. I don't have, my voice don't have power or politicians, we only see you throughout election time. Ms. Cabrera, City Councilwoman Cabrera came on this show to educate you. She's making herself accessible. She told you she's interested to hear what you have to say. She listened to my thoughts and my feelings towards it. She responded and she's giving you the option. So speak up and allow your voice to be heard. You're not going to take advantage of this opportunity. They've got a question, do you want to be part of the problem or the solution?
Exactly.
We're putting the ball in your court. But before we run out of time, I got to ask you a couple of questions, a couple more questions. We're going to rapid fire this one so we don't run out of time. Now, I know you don't deal with these particular areas, but I still have to ask you about it because these are important to me. Violence in the city. Now, I know that you don't, you're not in control of the police department and all that, but I just want to hear your perspective of how we can eliminate or at least carve back on some of the gun violence that we are seeing and experiencing in Wilmington. What can we do to change this tide of violence? And your opinion?
Well, very quickly, first of all, I mean, on city council, we're legislators. So they, we are elected to legislate the laws of the city and to pass a fiscal budget. And, you know, honestly, that's really what it comes down to. Anything extra that we do, our community engagement, community involvement is because we have a passion for doing that. So safety is a big issue and there is the Public Safety Committee for the city council. So yes, we do regulate that as well. But however, there are the laws and the codes that are in place that we as city council, Wilmington, the municipality of Wilmington and the mayor have control over. Now, the administration does certain things that they have control over and then we, the legislation. We can't always legislate to change what, how they want to do things. So there's, there's that, you know, that's divide. You respect the administrate, the different arms of, of government, basically. But working with them, suggesting and, and trying to implement things is the best thing to have, is a relationship with the administration as we see Congress and the president, right? The separation of powers. So we have that. However, now take it to another level. Wilmington is where? In the state of Delaware, which is in the United States of America. So there are certain federal laws that have to be followed, right? And rights that everybody has, including the police and people. And then you have the state laws that follow. So the police has, what, what you're specifically asking me is probably more around the Bill of Rights, the Policeman's Bill of Rights. That's something that they have and that's something that the state. If they wanted to change anything with the Policeman's Bill of Rights, for example, to allow us to question them, to reveal certain information because that has come up, that's the change that has to happen on the state level. But there are things that we can do here locally. As I had an excellent conversation with the chief of police yesterday. So there is no reason why your council members cannot communicate with the chief. I have worked hand in hand with the Wilmington Police Department. I've identified, you know, we identified properties that were a problem. I got the State Department involved, the U S Attorney's Office and the Deputy Attorney Generals were involved with certain problems that we had at Sixth and Jefferson, Eighth and Monroe. I worked hand in hand with the police. They let me know what was going on. They said, Councilwoman, do your thing. I saw that there wasn't any lighting on that block, which is another reason why crime was taking place, that the trees were overgrowing and covering the lights. I got the forester involved, we got the trees cut down, we got Delmarva to put the lights up. Don't think for one minute that we cannot work hand in hand to overcome this public safety issue. You know, but can I take guns away from people? Can I be out there? Can the police be everywhere and stop it? No, because a lot of this is, is happening elsewhere and we have elements coming from the outside. So what we need to do is a better job to educate our children, give people opportunities and job opportunities so they don't choose that life and understanding that some still might. Because I really do believe that some people on the streets, they're just out there trying to survive. They're really just trying to stay alive and survive, feed themselves and their families. So I feel compassion for that too. Is breaking the law the way to do it? Is giving drugs to other people and young people who are having addiction perpetuating in our black and brown communities? No, that is not the answer. To take the life of our young people, is that the way? No, these young folks need to learn that there's got to be conflict resolution, mediation, this whole quickness to, to be disrespected and to shoot somebody, that has to end. But that has to be all of us in the community working it. The police can't come into your home and solve your social issues. Those are things that we all have to get involved in. But we should have better relationships and communications with our police departments, with our elected leaders, ask for our help because I'm willing to do it and I've been on the ground doing it. I will march, I will pray, but I'm also going to take actions and find ways that we can start lowering. And now, something I recently learned is that we have this home rule. So if there's laws or legislation I want to put into place to control how we handle gun control in the city, I can do that. I don't need the state legislator to do that. So I am investigating those things and educating myself about what more can I do? And I do want to hear from the community and anybody who knows Maria Cabrera, and you can spread my name around and ask, people will tell you. I will return phone calls unless you're that one person that I miss. I'm so sorry, but I return phone calls. You can call the city council office. My aide is Tracy and she will, Tracy Owens will make sure that I get my messages. You can email me, you can text me, the city phone. I'm, I'm, I'm accessible, I always have been. I'm a little busier this time around the last time, still running the home care agency. But I promise you that on the days that I'm able to work on this, I will speak with you, I will meet with you. I'm here to serve you. You voted me and I'm a public servant and I understand what that means.
You're absolutely true. And I will speak personally, Ren, you always reply back to my texts even though it might be hours too later then, or I might reply back to you hours too later. But I understand you're very busy as well as I am. We're both busy people, so you know, we.
Busy people get things done.
Yes, they do. But you always make sure you reply back to me. Sometimes I get a text back when you'll be twelve, one o'clock in the morning, like, sorry, I'm just getting done. But you always reply to every message or every text I always send you. And I appreciate that. You have made yourself accessible to me since I met you, whether it's just through a personal conversation or just you trying to give me advice on things I can do to assist me with my business or just, you know, just educate me on what's going on out of the city. So I appreciate you and appreciate you making yourself so accessible to not only the citizens So I appreciate you and appreciate you making yourself so accessible to not only the citizens and the residents of Wilmington, but also to the past and present podcast, making yourself accessible to do this interview with me, being so transparent, educating the audience on these important legislations and how to improve the city. Before I go, I just have one more thing to say, just to go on to something you just said. Um, my thing is, and my advice on fixing the issue of the crime in the city are really simple. Here's my theory, okay? My theory is this, education is the true way of committing of um of complete, of drawing back this issue with crime, drug use, and violence in the city. Now, what I mean by education to people is, educating yourself, educating yourself, not just on what you read in school, books, history, math, yes, that's all important, but also educating yourself on self-love, learning to love yourself. One of the reasons I feel like we have so much black on black crime, brown on brown crime, and so much crime in the city is because there's so much, there's a lack of love for ourselves. We don't love ourselves, and what that does is, it translates into us trying to kill someone who reminds us of ourselves, the ugly part of ourselves we don't like. We have to learn to educate ourselves, to learn our history, learn who we are, learn to love ourselves, learn to like ourselves, even if others don't like us, not try to please others all the time, but try to take more time and interest in self-care. But also the importance of educating our children beyond putting a tablet or YouTube or video games in their hands, putting a book in their hands, teaching them how to read, teaching them how to do math, supplying them with a proper place to live where they feel safe, giving them stability in their life so that they can feel comfortable, building up their self-esteem. A lot of times their parents will beat their children down, they go to school, and they're so on the edge to fight or do something to someone because they've been beaten down so much in the house that they don't feel comfortable. You know, they don't feel, they don't feel adequate when they're going to school. They feel like the next person that says something to me is the straw that broke the camel's back. We need to educate ourselves on being better parents. Nobody's a perfect parent. I'm certainly not. I wouldn't accuse anyone to be a perfect parent, but we can do our best with helping educate our children. If we truly want to fight back the tide of violence, the poverty and things that we're seeing in the city, I would truly stand here right now and say, the best way to fight back is through education. Education will give us jobs, will give us better finances so we can fight back. I understand that, you know, we have certain legislations in different branches of the government that affect certain things, but we can't focus on what we can't touch and affect, we have to focus on what we can. And what we can do is, we can start in our own homes, we can start in our own backyards, we can start ourselves by educating ourselves, learning to love ourselves, learning to love each other, treat each other with respect, treat each other with manners, and learn to teach each other. It's okay if we all have shortcomings. It's about our growth, that's important. It's about our growth, or about us learning and learning to love each other, have compassion for each other. I want to thank you, City Councilwoman Cabrera, Ms. Cabrera, for being here with me today. We definitely don't have to have you back on, because I've got a lot more questions that I don't want to keep too long. I know you've been so, you're very busy, you've got a lot to do.
Well, there's still a lot going on, and I and I welcome the opportunity because I think communication is important. Not everybody might get on to watch the City Council meetings, or not everybody might be on on the committee seat. So I I think that your forum is really, and I invite people to please watch and and I love the work that you're doing, Alan and Henry. You are the best, and thank you for welcoming me and your audience. Um, and yes, we can do better, and it does start with self-love and loving others. But we really need to teach these young people some of the conflict resolution and realize that we have more in common than not. And I think that as people, we need to stop, you know, looking at others, at their differences, and let's start looking at the commonalities that we have in place. Because at the end of the day, we're all out here, we want the same things. We want safe, a safe home to live in, you know, have it maintained. We want an opportunity to to have a job and to make money and to be able to take care of ourselves and our families. And people should be given those equitable opportunities when it comes to housing, when it comes to work, and when it comes to education, and I'm sorry, the inequality and racial justice and 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 criminal justice and environmental justice. And until, and I think that this president, um, with his awesome Vice President Kamala Harris, can celebrate that again. I think that they are focusing on the right things, and that is going to trickle into our community. And we should be, and we're so thankful, and we're very lucky to have Biden in there. Because if we can't turn things around in Wilmington now, while we have the support of the federal government, then shame on us. And that means that we really don't have the resilience and we really don't have the passion to want to change this. Hold all your elected leaders accountable. Don't just hold me accountable, hold the governor, hold everybody that has a power, a position of power to be able to institute change in our community and hold each other accountable, but love each other. That's the most important thing. And let's be accepting of each other and understand that we may be different, but we do, we can find something that we have in common. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you so much, be safe out there, please practice your hygiene, please don't get COVID, and think about it and get your vaccine if you are able to, because we just got to keep each other alive and safe. We're we're battling a lot of pandemics right now.
Absolutely. Before we go, Mr. Cabrera, can you please give people, if they want to get in contact with you, how would they get in contact? What's the best way to get in contact with you? Do you have any questions, concerns, or anything for, what's the best way to contact you?
Well, the best way I think right now is that if you do call the council office, um, 302-576-2140. The phones are being answered, even if they're working remotely. You let them know you want to get a message to me. My my aide, Tracy Owens, will either send me an email, send me a message to my personal phone, and send me a message to my city phone. My city phone number is 302-530-4248. Mailbox still has to be set up. And again, you're working with my time constraints. When I see your message, get your message and can return it. Tracy will definitely call me if something's urgent immediately. Maria, you got to handle this call right away. I will have the emails forwarded to me, and the email is M Cabrera, my last name, M Cabrera at Wilmington DE dot gov. And if you do put on your screen, the spelling, people can get that, but it is C-A-B-R-E-R-A. M Cabrera at Wilmington DE dot gov. Those are three ways that you can get ahold of me. Um, and again, if it's something really urgent, uh, my aide will definitely get ahold of me. Um, to understand that I am running a very busy home healthcare agency, and during COVID, we are just, just a degree of stress and work and snow days that you just cannot imagine. I'm on this like 24/7. So please understand that if I don't get back to you right away, it's because I'm also serving another vulnerable community through uh the work that I do with my daughter, who's a nurse in the agency. So we're taking care of of society's most vulnerable people. So I'm I'm really in this public service thing twofold, not just with City Council. So to, I understand, I'm also an insurance agent, so I'm helping people have access to healthcare. So that's what's keeping me busy, but please reach out. I promise you that I will get back to you sooner or later, I will.
We'll have all the information available for you in the description tab. I will also spell out the email address to you on the screen so everyone will understand how to spell her name properly. I I um ask you again, please reach out with any questions, concerns, or any thoughts, especially February 11th, very important time for the city. Let your voice be heard. And we talked about it all the time, I'll repeat it one more time for you people, just so you understand. We talk about it when you vote, okay? Your voice being heard, vote. Now, here's an actual opportunity of letting your words have meaning. Put your words to action, make sure that City Councilwoman Ms. Cabrera, as well as others, hear your thoughts, your concerns about this bill that's coming up. Uh, and again, thank you for coming on. I want to thank everyone for listening, for joining to this special episode of Past and Present Podcast. As always, remember to like, share, comment, and subscribe to my channel. And until next time, I'll see you people. I've got one thing left to say, y'all, stay tuned. Peace.